Okay, the first order of business, we got to appoint two altenists to fill two vacancies. So, standing altenists will fill the two vacancies because we're a little shorthanded tonight. Record can show that. Next will be approval of the minutes for July 1st, 2013.
No comments?
No, no comments.
Okay, we'll let the record reflect that there is no comments for the instance of meeting. The minutes are accepted? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have to motion that?
No.
Okay, I guess the first item, consent items, application 13-40 of Darcy Roy, National Sign Corporation, agent for sovereign bank, owner for a sign permit for a sandtander on the property located at 741 Hot Metal Street.
What we have for them, Jerry, is that the signs that are proposed are essentially exact replacements for the ones that are there. We worked very hard with them beginning to make sure that they were replacements for existing signs because it's a historic building and so on. They agreed to that. That's why it's on the consent agenda. There are no issues with regard to regulations.
Will we accept the application?
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I motion?
Mine, Will Fisk.
Okay, the second item, application number 13-41. Courtney, pardon me if I mess this up, Febriello, Metro Beach Restaurant, agent for Simsbury 1820 House, owner for a sign permit for Metro Beach Restaurant on the property located at 731 Hot Metal Street.
This one, Jerry, is a Metro B relocated from across the street to the 1820 House. What they did was they replaced, there were two hanging signs below the 1820 House sign. The sign that they replaced it with is basically the same size and simply says the name Metro Beach.
It's already up.
It's already up.
Yeah.
Basically, I talked to the chairman when that came in and asked if he wanted it to go through the design review process. Because it's the same size, same area, and so on, it's the same existing sign, we didn't think that was necessary. So, that's why it's on the consent agenda.
And that's in the packet here. Oh, yeah. Any discussion? The signs are already up.
Will we accept your application?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we'll open the public hearing section. Application 13-38 of Mark Levekin.
This one actually is going to be continued to your next meeting. I indicated to the applicant and his attorney that the commission, the full commission, would not be here tonight. They would need four votes to get this approved, and I think that they, I suggested to them that they wait until the full commission was there in case somebody decided they didn't like it or they did like it, whatever, and they agreed to that. So, that'll be on your October 7th meeting.
I believe there was some correspondence that came from his attorney too as well.
That's correct, you're right. We have it in writing that they agreed to that extension.
Okay, so the record will show that that's going to be continued October 7th. Okay, we'll move on to next application, application number 13-42. Louisiana Sands Mark, agent for Rocco and LRG Endrazini, trustee owner for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 1.4b, Simsbury zoning regulation to allow the operation of an antique in a state auction business on the property located at 17 Herman Drive. So, what do we have here?
By way of explanation, Mr. Chairman, you have in front of you tonight two maps, also a series of photographs. The maps show the layout of the Herman Drive area where this building is located. The second one below that shows the specific lot and the parking layouts that we had in our file from the previous approval. 2007.
Simsbury.
Yeah, okay.
Which building is it again? What number?
Number 17, the end of the cul-de-sac, directed.
All right, right, straight in the back.
As a little background point, Rich Carrier, a commercial real estate broker, other tenants in the building, Reliable Plumbers on 17A, which is the further side to the east, local color is also on the east side, 17B, Louisa has proposed for 17C, which is still on the east side. Then there's a divider where there's trees and grass, and to the right you have the landscape company, Briggs Landscaping, they're in unit 17D and E, and Trans Powers is in unit 17A.
Can you spell it?
Sure. C, A, T, I, A.
Can you please, sir, show us on this map where we're talking about as far as the building that, the tenant, is this the building that we're talking about?
Yeah, this is how you go.
The whole thing?
Yeah, she's looking right here.
So, their business would be right there.
Right here. Here's the southern side with this, the grass and trees.
Okay.
Is there a printing here?
That would be, yes, local color.
Yeah, local color, that's right.
Are there parking spaces that are assigned to each business, or is this more flexible than that?
It's more flexible. And the business all seems to be there.
Rich, because of the speak-up.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, it's more flexible than that. You have, you know, the designated spaces here, you've got some pre-marked spaces over here. There's room here, but where nobody, usually he's parking. Then you have the cul-de-sac and you have the street down here. None of the leases actually have, she has her auction, it'd be like occasionally, it's not an every night thing. It's, would it be like, the tenant before this was jazzercise, and they used to have a lot of people every day. And her business is a lot of it, sort of the internet, and then an occasional auction, and she proposed to do it off hours when any other tenants would be least affected.
It could be anytime. You prefer to do it in the evenings?
I would do it in the evenings.
Or Sunday.
Sunday. Okay. And what kind of, we're talking about parking, like what kind of capacity you think you're going to need? And you can't predict who's going to show up. You have to have some kind of an idea.
I'm anticipating 50 to 75 people at the most.
Okay.
And a lot of people come, you know, together, couples.
And when will those primarily be out here?
Pardon me?
What time would that primarily be?
Primarily Sundays or evenings.
How will that affect the other businesses? What are their normal hours of operation?
Yeah, may I? Pradeep Bajaj.
Come over here, please.
Okay, yes, of course. You do this. Hi, my name is Pradeep Bajaj. I own local coloring. I'm in 17B.
Can you spell his last name?
B is in books, A, J, A, J. I run a printing and direct mail business there. And as far as the comment about the parking, it is not quite as flexible. I have been promised three spaces outside my door, as is Reliable Plumbing. He said he was going to be here, but he's not. And so, that's what the six parking spaces between A and B exist. There isn't any more assigned marked parking spaces there. And C has three spaces in front of it. And I wish that map could be up somewhere that I could talk about it. But I guess my concern is, I work in the evening sometimes, not very frequently, and sometimes depending on the kind of projects I have or when they're needed, sometimes I'm there in the weekends too. And I don't want to obstruct any new business coming into place, but love to have members. It's quiet there. But I'm concerned about the parking. I have use of the loading dock. 17B and C, they both have loading docks. I have big trucks coming sometimes for delivery and pickup. I need availability for them to maneuver so that they're not hemmed in. That's my concern.
And your delivery times for your trucks, are they on at night or during the day?
It's all over the time. Not so much in the evening, but there are times like if the political season's coming, I'll be working all the weekends.
Ron, you asked about parking too. We can see on this map, there are a total of 20 spots that are numbered spots, and we've got indications that certain of the building that's being talked about now is right there, with three spots in front of it. And then there's the landscape building and the printing building, which are over here.
No, the printing is, printing is next to where it's, the new business is planned. I'm 17B. May I?
Yeah, B is there, okay. Okay. Do you think possible auctions is here?
It's here.
And this is landscaping over here?
Correct. There's a little island in the middle.
These are the spots here, but what's an, we don't know about. I can't quite tell us.
It's all paved.
Could it be spotted?
It could be.
It could be spotted, possibly closer here, but not that much closer here, because he gets trucks all the time too, that he needs to back up. Probably let it stop there. That's correct.
In Herman Drive, people park on Herman Drive out to Lordship Boulevard. You'd have 27 on each side of the street.
You could.
You could.
And that's okay to park there?
This isn't a survey either, so I don't know if this is something we can rely on in terms of parking spaces, but if they're not on here, I wouldn't assume that they could be counted as parking.
These are, no, I don't think so.
There was a reason why they're left. You can count on people parking there, but there's not designated spots.
My parents will come on that also.
Well, you'll have to take, make a turn.
Do I have to register or just go?
Yeah, once he's completed, somebody else will.
So, the trucks come in this way, back up.
Are they box trucks or are they?
Yes.
Do you find that the spaces that you have in front of your business are adequate for people who need to come in and visit you that are not box trucks?
The three spaces in front of me, there are times when they're not adequate. I ramp up with manpower based on projects as I will the next six weeks, and then I get temps come in, and they all come in cars.
So, you don't have any designated employee spots?
Those three spots in front of me, I don't have any other spots.
What do you do with your overflow when you have more?
I talk to Reliable Plumbing and renegotiate to cooperate.
Thank you.
Who was the tenant before this today now?
It was jazzercise.
Oh, so did they have reliable?
They have, they have parked all over the place, and that was a problem.
That was a problem for Reliable Plumbing.
Yeah, and you know, so we were thinking that Louisa was the different that we used. We had yoga studios and things like that. And one of the things that Rock had mentioned to me was to make sure that, you know, whether the user is, they're not using up the same spots, so we didn't, so we didn't go with the yoga studio, we didn't go with all the, that type of use because of the jazzercise experience. And we thought that Louisa's use was more infrequent type of use of having people come there, on an occasional visit.
Seems like you'd have to label it properly so people would know. It's a little confusing in there, right? Where they can go and where they can't.
Right, correct.
And also go where they're not supposed to go.
Yeah.
I think another gentleman had to hold it down, just enough to let your, plus the podium, and know who you are and where you live.
Gufert, I own lots, number, you know, number 11 and 15 Herman Drive.
Can you spell his last name?
Gufert. I've spoken to all the property owners on both sides of this property, number nine, 10, 11, 12, and 15, and they've, we've all agreed that we request that no special exemption be allowed for Herman Drive for the operation of an antique in a state auction business for the reasons, due, due to heavy commercial traffic, large trailer trucks, large box trucks of all kinds, and large vehicles like those that move logs and stuff they have down there now. It ties up the street. Herman Drive is very narrow, can't handle more traffic on this road, large commercial vehicles like tractor trailer trucks, need all the full width of the road, the back and the load, they're good. We have steel trucks, people come to our house, we have windows, these are big tractor trailers, and they got to back in sometimes, there's no room in the road. When they had jazzercise, I must have been on the phone 100 times trying to get them off my lawn, off the street, because they blocked everything up, it was a zoo. And it's going to be a headache right down the road. And all these people I talked to, all the landlords who owned this property, all agree that this shouldn't be allowed, and I have their authority to talk to them. And when that jazz-a-cycle there, it was a mess, and you couldn't, you couldn't do anything. They're on the street, on my lawn, and all these people have lawns right around this property, and they all fear the same thing. And they all have tractors coming in day and night, you know, there's no, no time like they have, the trucks coming in on their property all day and night. There's no parking, there was never parking there in the first place. You can't park on that road. It's impossible. I mean, where the property, have you, have you people been down to look at the property?
I've been there with the property.
Way back?
I've been down the, come back.
When it wasn't cleaned up like it is now, it was a mess. It's always been that way. It's not been very handy for them. Even the people living, who have the businesses on their property really don't want this.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the owner of Simsbury Precision, I rent the unit at number 11 Herman Drive, and I hear you talking about 27 cars on each side of that street, and I just see the nightmare. I got tractor trailers bringing in raw materials, tractor trailers picking up items that we're shipping, we're dropping off things, and they have to be able to maneuver in that road and back down into that driveway. That's how they've been doing it for years. And I just see a disaster.
If we got cars parked on both sides of that street all the way down?
If it was on one side, would that make a difference?
Which side are you going to do it on? Don't do it, don't do it on the side that impedes my guys from backing into my driveway.
Both sides.
Do it on the other side of the street.
Both sides.
You know, really, you know.
What if we were to limit it to the weekends?
Well, you know, if you're limiting it to the weekends, there's still some deliveries, but, you know.
Most of the, most of the work you do is during?
Is during, I mean, we're there seven days a week. I got out early because I got here today, had to come here. But we have trucks that come 6 o'clock at night sometimes for picking up tractor trailers, picking up shipments. Sometimes they're there 6:00 in the morning. I just think it might be a real problem.
My name is David Lin, and I rent the unit at the 15 Herman Drive, right next to the 17 building.
Can you spell it?
D-E-G-L-I-N-G. It's Inner Glass Window Systems is my company. We have the same problem. Two days ago, or three days ago, I had to wait until 6:30 for the trucking company to back this semi-trailer in to get a shipment, to get a shipment out. So, any time, any evening is going to be bad. They do not work on weekends, I do, like everyone here, but it could very well be a problem. And they could, parking on the road doesn't make it, because that road, if you put one line of parked cars, there is then one lane left, and they're not going to be able to make the swing into the, into the driveways. It just won't be possible. And I know that to get into ours, they have to back all the way from the street and go in.
From the cul-de-sac, they have to back up.
Yeah, they, from the cul-de-sac, they back in to ours and then back around. So, that would be very difficult. And then, if it was during the weekdays, it would be a nightmare. And anybody, I would have a front row seat of it. It wouldn't affect me as badly, but the plumber who is not here, he would, he could very possibly have his vehicle blocked out or in, because he keeps his plumbing truck inside the building before it was blocked in because of the jazzercise. He had a, an emergency call, and he couldn't get it out. So, then I would have to listen to him all the time. Thank you.
Question for the owners or the tenants there. Do they have to bring an 18-wheeler in there? I mean, I'm sure there's shippers that you can't.
Heavy loads.
It's all, yeah.
20-foot bars of steel, aluminum.
I didn't know if it could be done with a smaller shipment.
It's all day long, too.
No, it's ADF.
Basically, all the time, even big box trucks come in there. If you've got two, a car trying to pass one of these trailer trucks on the street, there's no room. It's virtually impossible.
Okay.
My name's, my name's Ron Locondro, L-O-C-A-N-D-R-O, and I rent from 15 Herman Drive as well as David does. My business does not require large tractor trailers, but as my wife alluded to, we see it all the time. We see a lot of vehicles coming in and out. We see the issues with parking that we have right there within our facility, and then even out on the cul-de-sac. To turn around in there, it's not a very large cul-de-sac. The road itself is not very wide. And a lot of times when I'm coming in and out and there's a tractor trailer sitting there, I just couldn't imagine cars on either side and a tractor trailer, you can barely get a tractor trailer, you can't get around a tractor trailer on that road. I don't think, I don't know the codes for roads, but it's not a normal width road to begin with. And then, the issues that we run into with, with getting vehicles around there and parking and that kind of stuff, a lot of times even in the back, we don't have adequate parking. My fear is, similar to what happened in Flyin', just happened, everybody tries to find a place to park, you can't find one in the street, where do you go? You go right into our, our facility, they go into areas where they don't realize they shouldn't be parking. Now these trucks can't get back in there. I know because, because I, I live and work there all the time, I know that, you know, I can't park there because David won't be able to get his, his truck back there. So, that's my, as everybody else, my biggest concern is, is the, is the volume. And I do come in on the weekend. I would hate to see, you know, somebody parking in front of my evening and I couldn't get in or out, so.
Rich, can the owner do any modific, is there any way you could do modifications to the site to reconfigure or add parking that won't affect these folks?
That's something we'd have to, we'd have to take a look at. Probably hire a land planner and lay everything out. The other thing, I was talking to Louisa, and if you, you know, if all of you, she's willing to, you know, do something on a trial basis, like a six-month type of trial, and again, and limit her auction activity to just a weekend, a Saturday or a Sunday, if that would possibly help.
Or even just a Sunday.
Or even just a Sunday.
Something where it's the absolute.
You know, and it's, and again, it's not every week that she would have it.
Where, did you look at any other, I'm just out of curiosity, did you look at any other locations that, that weren't?
Go ahead.
I mean, I'm putting my kind of economic development hat on here, just trying to, we all want to promote business in Simsbury. You know, and if most of the other sites were in Avon and Canton and Granby, then, you know, I'm probably more inclined to say, let's, maybe not six months, but let's just try and see it. But have you, had you looked at any other?
I've looked at sites all in the area over the last couple of years.
So, how big is, what's the square footage of this?
2,500 square feet, including the office space.
And what are the normal business hours going to be?
Pardon me?
Normal business hours, Monday through Friday or?
I won't have any set business hours. It'll be by appointment if somebody wants to come bring things.
And then when you have an auction?
Right, and then I'll have, when I have the auction, I'll have a preview period, and then the auction.
So, you have 2,500 square feet, and you don't plan on bringing any of the, of your equipment or, or goods outside and placing them outside for view?
No, no.
Of that 2,500, it's probably, what, 1,500 is actual display area, the rest of this office, restrooms.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, if you have 50 or 60 cars out there, you're going to be able to fit everybody inside the, the square footage?
Yeah, that would be something, that would be something limited by the fire marshal, so we had that discussion with him as to numbers.
Thank you.
Sir?
Hi, I'm Tim Mitchell. I own 10 Herman Drive. And I do agree with the other people here in opposing this request, and they're, they're really right on the mark when it comes to the, the parking, the fact the street is small. And, you know, we heard, I think 75 was the number, but what if it's twice that much? I mean, no one really knows how much it's going to be. If you, if you let it in, what if it's double that number? I'm just concerned that it is too much traffic, and, and I don't want people parking in my, my property. Like another gentleman said, look, they'll just, you know, they don't want to walk way down a worship road, they're just going to park wherever. And if it's, maybe some of my tenants aren't there on the evenings, they'll just go to my property. So, I'm concerned. I don't think this is the right business. I'm a landlord, so I want to bring in as much business as possible like you guys, just as long as it's the right business. But I don't think this is characteristic with the street, this business. I really don't feel it's the right fit for the street, as you've heard. So, I just wanted, as an owner, to express my concern that this is not the right business for this particular area. Thank you.
If they eliminate the parking on the street, then that might solve the problem. If no parking on the street, then it solves the problem.
That's right.
Well, then you have to eliminate for everybody that has.
Well, there's nobody parking, nobody parks on the street now, you can't get trucks in.
But we don't know in the future what other, when other tenants vacate, who else is going to be coming in, so, see what I'm saying?
Well, there's a sign down the end of the street, one of the side of the street that has no parking up down toward the end.
You know, we did break in, turned on to Lordship, there's a sign about 20 feet before that, which says no parking, there's only no parking sign that's on that street currently.
I mean, that would solve the problem, because nobody would object to that.
Okay, is there anybody?
That's just a recommendation, yeah.
Anybody else?
One other little quick concern, you said Saturday preview, Sunday auction. If the road filled up on Saturday, we do get mail delivery, and I don't know if that 27 parking spaces were going to infringe on all the mailboxes, or a lot of mailboxes on that street, and that just might cut down on that number also.
Yes.
Any other public discussion on this?
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on this application.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Give a second, Nick.
Discussion?
We could do, we could ask for postponement until we get some more information. I'm a little concerned about the issue with this additional space that he's talking about here that could be used for parking higher.
How many cars could go there?
Right.
Because if they were parking in this triangle, sorry to the public, you can't see where, near the building we're talking about, if that was usable, it seems like it would be, would be burdening these buildings, might be burdening these guys, but the question on whether they're there on Sunday. That's a, that's a question.
Well, actually, if you go back to that back building, the parking is extremely limited, like there's like a blocking trucks back there, like on number 17.
Your 17.
Yeah, but this is pretty well locked in and all, there's all kinds of parking. Now, it looks pretty good, it's cleaned up as normally, there's hardly any room for any parking.
Okay. I think that the owner do an assessment of how many everybody has and needs, what is available, what could, you know, a couple of different categories, what is available, what potentially could be made into parking spots, and what is completely off limits.
All right, do we also know what the width of the roadway is? Can we get that information from?
That's a good point, Jerry. What I'm going to suggest to you too is if you would make a motion to reopen the hearing so we can gather that information and give it to you at your next meeting, that might be, we'll make a list of things that we would want to see that. You can't do that if you've closed it, so if you make a motion to reopen it for the receipt of that information, we could continue it, I think the October 7th meeting, and then we can get that information to you. We'll do it with the road, available parking. I'll talk to the police about the parking up there too, make sure that's coordinated along with the public works.
We have to do that under the public hearing? You can't do that.
Once you've closed it, I can't give you that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing for application number 1342 of Louise Sands Mark, agent for Rocco B., and LRG Trevor Sandy, trustee, owner for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section I 4B, Simsbury zoning regulation to allow for the operation of an antique in a state auction business on the property located at 17 Herman Drive.
Can I also find out about making no parking, that's free, so that makes that the problem?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, and the purpose for that, as we reflect, is that we want to try to gain the information that everyone talked about, get a good handle on that before the commission decides it. I'll get that to you before your next meeting, and it's, it'll be available to everybody, so good for you.
Highly recommended. The owner should be talking with the tenants as well, so we get a kind of confirmation.
That's correct.
And any correspondence that could come in from any of the other owners? I know that appears that most of them are represented here, but I know they said a few were absent, I don't see any of the correspondence.
The owners are, I represent them because they gave me permission all the way, you know, up to where they have laws on the street.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing.
Continue until October seventh.
Is the car washing it? Okay, the next item on the agenda, application thirteen dash thirty-seven, Thomas J. Daley, P.E. of Maloney McBroom Incorporated, Agents for Simsbury Turnpike Realty LLC for a Site Plan Amendment on the property located at fifteen dash thirty-four, excuse me, fifteen dash thirty-nine Albany Turnpike West Simsbury. All right.
Applicants here to present this. This is a part of the proposal that you previously saw for the car wash that was, it's in the process of being rebuilt, so just let the applicant go ahead and make their presentation.
For the record and for the commission, my name is Mark Aragoni, I'm not, not Daley, although he's a partner of mine. I'm a licensed landscape architect and a stakeholder and principal of the firm of Maloney McBroom, who's here representing the applicant, Simsbury Turnpike Realty LLC. What we have here is a couple of different maps. One of them is just a, basically one of the sheets that was included in our application plan set that really highlights the area of site plan amendment that we're here asking for your consideration on. Some background and history of the project, as Hiram mentioned, the project was approved, I think, back in two thousand twelve, site plan application. What was not included in that application was something that I think the owner wishes it could have been, and now it is included, and that's why we're here asking amendment. And basically, it's a parking driveway and circulation improvement that will look to improve the circulation of Staples Plaza and curb cutting management along forty-four. Historically, DOT had done a corridor study that recommended interconnection behind these parcels. The S T C standing permit for this property also recommends connection, rear connection of these parcels. So if I can highlight a few things on this map, which is LA one and it's a scale of one inch equals twenty. Here's the car wash. There's a little more than a three hundred square foot addition planned for that car wash. Basically, that's enclosing a concrete pad self-wash station that's out there now. That's basically enclosure. There's one right next to it that's enclosed now.
Excuse me, forty-four across the top there?
Yep.
Okay, so we're coming in.
Forty-four runs here. You have the car wash, hard for credit union, Subway, Dunkin' Donuts, and then Liquor Depot building headed on in that direction. So if I can highlight one of the main improvements for the project is, right now there is a little bit of congestion at that intersection. The improvement in circulation for the project is to create a one-way flow through here, back out in this direction. In order to do that, this is a proposed rear connection that does not exist. Why we put a little color on it, so we can explain that to you. Previously approved and constructed, where the vacuum bays over here. So the circulation off of forty-four would utilize the existing signalized intersection right adjacent from the Hoffman Auto Park complex. But flow would be directed in this direction. Car wash users, circulatory flow around the backside to this new proposed access, which would then run behind the Dunkin' Donuts, behind the existing credit union building and connect into, basically at the corner of the rear of the former Bob's, now Liquor Depot building. Okay? Some other improvements that go along with this, now that this access driveway is proposed, is to really improve the delivery access to the rear of Dunkin' Donuts and also give some employee parking spaces back there. That's what's highlighted right here. There's also a flip of a few parking spaces out here to this, to this area. So what's rendered on the plan, has a little color on it, so it's proposed, what's rendered in green is actually the handling of, the reworking of the roadway, the drainage. This will be a detention basin. Now, there's a bio-retention basin up in this area and also a little biodepression in this area. But the general flow of the water still continues down this direction and then enters and crosses forty-four and the existing cul-de-sac and goes through the Hoffman Auto Park. It's a little backwards when you're out there, but that's how it flows. Let's see, what else can I highlight on this plan?
When you come in off of forty-four, is that, look at the arrows, that's a two-way? So when you come in, you can go right to the car wash or you can go straight through and go around the back?
Correct, and that's, that's a good point. So this road right here was originally proposed when we started laying this out at a twenty-two foot wide roadway. We went not only with Simsbury staff, we met with Simsbury Fire Marshal. We were recommended to go meet with Avon because we're in that area where Avon and Canton and Simsbury Town Line are. So we met with Avon Fire Emergency Services and Town Planner Steve Kushner over there. This roadway, two-way roadway went from a twenty-two to a twenty-four foot wide roadway, which is how it's proposed in your application. So yes, two-way circulation, which this will probably be a most helpful. You take a step back, car wash building, and then we have, again, credit union, Subway, Dunkin' Donuts, and there's the larger building. Right now, that rear access drive with additional parking comes through here and out here. The proposal is to continue that rear access driveway as was recommended in the S T C permit now and connect it through to here to a signal. If you know the forty-four corridor, there is no signal.
That's a nightmare.
There is no signal. So the idea is that rear corridor will really help in the circulation of access to those, to those units.
Do, would you see it being used as a cut-through from West Avon Road to forty-four going?
Good, good point, good point. Some other things that are planned, as you can see, it's not a straight shot through the back there. There's some curves, there's curb cuts, there's parking spaces that are straight, ninety-degree access right onto it. The other thing that's being proposed, there is an additional three-way stop behind one of the buildings back there, Staples or wherever it is. There will be a stop here at the back corner of the Liquor Depot and Dunkin' Donuts. There will be another three-way stop proposed on this corner where the flow of the one-way circulation for the car wash will be. So we have two additional stop accesses that will be installed as part of that.
Is that on town, is that going to be a town road or is it a private road?
It's a private road.
Right, so there's really no enforcement on those stops?
Oh, sure there is.
Is there?
Yeah, yeah. Was it ten cars or more? Parking lot with ten cars or more, any property with ten cars or more, a lot of people take.
Oh, good to know. I'll make sure and stop at all those. Can you tell me what the difference is between the brown rectangles there and the rest of the road?
Yeah, these are just during construction, we want to have an anti-tracking pad, which is just a larger stone. And if you're familiar with that area, another deterrent is, this actually gets utilized, this rear access road, which is good, it gets utilized, but there's some traffic either going to Port Llaro or in the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through lane. More oftentimes than not, it's not a real good cut-through because there's, there's people using it.
Now, as far as the flow from forty-four into the car wash and around, there's that grayed area that's going to be covered, kind of a carport area for a wash your own. Is there a way to drive through that area without getting your car washed? In other words, you're in, you want to, you want to go around, but how do you get access on the backside of the, of the car wash to that road that's being proposed?
Derek, Tunji Somma with the car wash, that's going to be enclosed, the roof just extended over, over that bay and it'll be a detail shop. So it'll just be for cars that have an appointment for detail.
I need your name.
Tunji Somma, S O M M A.
And if I remember correctly, the way to get in there is by a gated access. So to get in there, you've already paid to get your car washed. It's not like, oops, I'm back here by accident. I want to get my car washed.
So what's going to prevent cars from backing up and blocking that intersection if he gets busy? Because I know the competition he's going to have down the street, they can back them up way out into the Walmart parking lot.
I don't exactly know what the queue is, but as far as operations, you may want to go into a little bit of detail, but there's a pretty significant, and I know you're speaking to Russell Spears down the road.
Yeah, we'll go down there in the winter.
There's a pretty significant queuing length down here. I think you also split it into two.
We did, and we can, we can hold two cars or in the two lanes, we can hold up to four or five cars just in that without spilling out over the, the island. And that's, and we're talking about every two minutes, we'll be able to let cars. So we're going to have four to five cars in this area right here, and then once you've paid, the gate opens and then that will allow you to queue over to here so we can hold another four to five cars. So we're probably able to hold in queue ten cars for just two minutes, because it would be every two minutes a car would go through. The touchless wash over here will have this, yeah, this queue line. And again, that's, that's a four-minute total time between in and out.
Because here's my problem, we discussed the traffic issue before when we talked about moving the cars through your line. This was before this road was going to go through, but we always knew this road would go through in the future. And now we're talking about, and I can just see the holiday season, a lot of people cutting through from West Avon Road, they're going to cut through because they can't get through that big intersection at forty-four, at Simsbury and Avon. They're going to be coming through here and now it's going to be after a winter storm, we're going to have cars stacking out on the Route forty-four, and then we're going to have people trying to pull out at the light even though they have the green light. There's going to be people trying to get in, people trying to get out. So my big concern now is we've got this new roadway, which is going to be, let's face it, it's going to handle some traffic, I think, once people learn the route. And then we're going to have the possibility of cars stacking at the car wash. So my concern is, are you going to be able to move the cars and not get the stacking problem Russell Spears, Spears has? Because he said the same thing. I sat at that meeting in Avon and they were saying how they can move one car a minute if they have to and, but have you been there in the winter and you can see they can stack them up? So that's my only concern is right at that, that choke point, they're right at that intersection where your driveway meets the new roadway going out onto the state road.
I think that we can be a little bit more efficient because all of our wash equipment will be mechanized and, you know, where we time it so that we can have, just in the tunnel, six cars just in that tunnel, all being washed or various phases of being washed. And, and even for the, you know, the touchless wash, assuming that the longest wash is, is just four minutes and that's out the door, dried from the moment you go in to the moment you leave, all of that is mechanized and it's designed to be as efficient and as quick as possible to provide you with that, that type of service.
Remember how it was before?
Yeah.
But that was with, you know, an eighteen-year-old kid.
The one lane.
It backed up a little bit. I, I see this being a much more efficient manner of getting of traffic through.
Oh, I think his car wash will be, I'm just concerned now we're combining with new traffic flow that could be.
Excess cars backed up, is that going to have any effect on those bays for the vacuum cleaners there? I, I can't really judge it by the map there, but if you, let's say you had more than two rows of five and now you're backed up through there, what kind of an effect does that have on those bays?
This is, up to here, is almost seventy feet.
Okay.
So I, I think, you know, if a parking lot or a parking spot is twenty feet, I think we should be able to, and that's, that was kind of why we moved it over and put it into two lanes to try and absorb as much as we possibly can. And then as soon as you get your receipt, your gate opens, which allows you to queue into here, and now that'll help eliminate that bottleneck. We didn't want to have, we didn't want to get a bottleneck with people having to pay and much of it's going to be automated too. So most people that have a membership and an RFID reader, a little like EZ Pass tag, like you drive in, it'll recognize you go up, you press a button, you get your receipt. And so our model for the car wash overall is efficiency and more of a, a modern, you know, a fast pace.
What about people who want to get their car washed that are coming from the West Avon side? How do they gain access to your queue?
They would, correct me if I'm wrong, but they would utilize this new road and come in this direction.
So you're going to have people coming off of forty-four, making a right-hand turn, potentially people making a left-hand turn into the same line?
This signal, yeah, this would be signal controlled.
Right.
So you would have the, there would be a potential for a car coming here.
Right.
Having to make wait and take a left-hand turn, not uncommon to a lot of other areas, similar to people who use Dunkin' Donuts or Petco coming from West Avon Road, Port Llaro, they come in that back way. There's our, there are right-hand turn lanes, and once you get in there, there's left-hand turns. It's going to function as a rear access, but it's within a parking, a parking area for a, for a shop.
If you have someone coming off forty-four who's not going to the car wash, but is doing the cut-through, you've got the guy coming this way, taking the left to go into the car wash, that seems to be a little bit of a choke point, I would think.
Well, it's just so close to.
Right, okay. Right, so if I'm, if I'm cutting through here, I'm only going to get my car washed, I've got a series of cars coming in here, some going this way, some going that way. I just wonder if you've got enough space to react there.
Yeah, I would worry if it were a left-hand turn coming off of forty-four, but because it's right, right, it's a right-hand turn and a right-hand turn. I mean, we can't plan for the, you know, seven o'clock Christmas Eve with a snowstorm where there's going to be traffic.
Sure.
But because it's a right and a right, it's almost a free, a free movement. Like I said, we can't plan for every, every aspect or every holiday, but much better than it being a left-hand turn, then I think that probably wouldn't work.
Hiram, were there any traffic counts done in this or any?
There were no counts that I'm aware of, Jerry. We did, we did ask that if they coordinate with Avon, and I do have a notice, a notification from Steve Kushner that's, that they had no, no comment, looks fine. I guess I had a couple of questions for the applicant that could. Indicated that, met with folks in Avon, and was it the fire marshals that required the increase in the width of the road?
I believe it was.
I believe it was. I mean, it's obviously going to be a significant road, there's no question about that. I had a couple of, couple of questions, and I do think that until people get used to it, it's going to be confusing when people come around this area here. If they get in here and they didn't have a plan to, you know, they think they're going to go up here, I'm not sure how this would work. Is this actually a raised island here that they, is this a curve?
It is.
So, so they're either going to have to go through it at that point or, or figure out how to get over the curve and out of here. So I think that's an important place there. So you may want to have a sign that says, you know, exit this way or something, or car wash that way or something. Other thing I had a suggestion, maybe, and this has bothered me since the beginning, is that I'm not sure, I think it's somebody brought up too, the length of the queues here could be increased by straightening this line out a little bit and getting more, more room in here. If you can't do that, I need, I'd like to know why, but it seems to me that the shape of this, this island is important. And if you can get two lanes in there, because I do think that if you get two lanes and they're stacked in there, you get them stacked up to here, someone's going to try to back out. And if you can provide a bit more room for them to get over toward the building as opposed to where the vacuums are, it might be a help. So that was just a. There's a telephone pole right here. We, it could be that, we could move it over. We had it here so that the radius to get into the tunnel is the easiest for somebody, I think they modeled it with an F three fifty long bed crew cab with hitch. So it can easily, driven by a little old vehicle. I mean, I could see even, for example, sliding the. I mean, I could see even for example, sliding these gates down a little bit here and then widening this out.
And that affects the radius.
Well, I would change the radius, I mean, just moving this to here.
Another car length even.
Still going to have another, the radius is not going to change, I wouldn't change that. But just, and I would leave that to your engineer. But I think, I think the concerns with regard to stacking, especially stacking on 44, if that ever becomes an issue, it'll be an issue for everyone, you know. And certainly we don't want anyone to get hurt, but we don't want the commission to approve something that's not going to work either.
I just think you would be concerned with people backing out of those.
Oh, sure.
You know, and banging into cars, that's not good for the business either, so. So I just think it would suggest it.
You know, that might be, that's another.
They're backing into an exit lane. You guys understand there's a dedicated lane there, that they're not backing into, they're not backing the queuing lane.
No, no, my next question was, what's the distance between the parking stripes and?
This is 22 feet between the back of the furthest point of end of the parking lane.
Yeah.
Or parking spot to the lane.
Right, how many feet, 22?
22.
And then there's a barrier?
And there's.
No, there's no barrier.
Parking stripes.
There'll be parking stripes.
Parking stripes are usually 15 to 18 feet.
Well, here's the layout, these are angled parking spaces. So an angled parking space, whether it's 60 or 30, they're actually a 23-foot depth because of the angles of the rectangular shape of a car. Then you have a 22-foot lane. Now you could actually have, you can get away with 18, 19, 20 foot if you have one-way angled parking. That's a pretty substantial lane of 22 feet. Now, what we were mentioning before is this lane in here, which is roughly 70, probably a little bit more than 70 feet, where the split happens here, where you now have two lanes, this is just dedicated for queuing.
Right.
And the reason that the fire marshal looked at it was, this is a pretty important to keep. So we have 22 feet here to allow them to back up. This would be a striped line right here. This would all be curved. The internal would all be curved.
Can I pull in? I see the queue, I'm going to change my mind. I'm driving between the queue lane and the people backing out of those spots, is that correct? Do I have to look at that?
And through here, and the 22-foot lane.
I mean, I would think equated to West Hartford where, what is it, LaSalle? Where they have the pull-off one-way, or it's not even at South Main Street, I believe. Where you pull in and then they have the little driveway that you can pull off in front of and they have angled parking. You may have to stop, wait for a car to back out and continue on the right way. It's one of those things that I think Hiram was right in. It'll take a week or so to get used to, but the overall functionality and why STC pushed for this roadway in the first place was the overall endpoint will relieve some of the traffic stress.
Well, I think this roadway has been in the works for 15, 20 years, Hiram, because I remember when I worked in Avon and they were redoing the abdows and they put that road in, they showed an eventual connection on the other side, so. But this is just, you know, it's a little bit in the mix. You know, I agree with Hiram, I'd like to see maybe a slight change in the queuing and where the wash station, pay station is for stacking reasons. Because I am concerned, as are the other commission members, as far as people getting in there and then having to back out or how many we can stack there. I don't know, I just can see that being a potential issue.
So that would suggest, and I don't know what your timeframe is, but I'm sure it isn't as possible. But what I would suggest is that if the engineer can do as much as they possibly can and show us what a typical stacking diagram would look like, give that information, just PDF me that information, whatever, on the site plan so that the commission can get that and feel comfortable. And I'd be happy to draft something for your next meeting in terms of a series of things that you want to see going forward.
You know, a diagram that shows actual vehicles stacked, I mean, just to give us a, you know, scenario of what you think would be an average day there.
And if we can make a tweak to a radius or if we can, you know, slide it forward by a couple of feet and maybe.
Doubling that where your fingers are now, making that so it's two lanes for longer than time.
Yeah.
This allows maybe two or three more cars to be able to be stacked there.
I was there recently, but I don't recall, what is that point, what is that?
This right here?
Yeah.
I could drive, I'd be nuts, I don't know what it is. Carlos, you don't remember what that is, do you? I think it's a light pole.
Oh, it's the tension line for the.
Yeah, it's the tension rod for the telephone pole.
Ah, okay.
So that might be.
Depends, they're usually installed at the angle point.
Yes, my hunch is there's a reason why that.
Yeah, you never know.
And one other question, the driveway going out, the new roadway going out to the state road, how many turn lanes is that? It's one coming in and is there a left straight turn lane and then a right turn lane only, or is it just a?
Straight left and a right turn.
Yeah.
A straight?
Straight left and a right.
And a right.
Correct.
So there's in, there's a straight and left, and then a right.
Okay.
How far down the road do we care for Simsbury? I don't know where the lines are there behind Dunkin' Donuts, so we, I guess I have a question about the Dunkin' Donuts side. Because I know when you go through the drive-through, you've got to go to the back, move around. Is that going to infringe, where is the road going to fringe on that?
Basically, the next time you go through there, and you're not going to use it as a cut through. When you come from West Avon Road, you'll take a right right on the corner of Liquor Depot. This road will continue straight in front of you.
You can't cut in there and then zip into the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, and if you just follow my hand here, this is the existing road. All right? There is the existing parking lot, there's a couple parking spaces right here for Dunkin' Donuts.
Yep.
We will, we will come right through basically the last parking space and the grass that's out there.
Okay.
So the movement into Dunkin' Donuts will be very similar to how it is now. You would come in here and you would come around there.
Okay.
You don't have, you don't have anything showing movement in this direction here. You've got this coming this way, but isn't it possible to go in here and go this way? I would think so.
Yeah, no, you could do that.
That's how it is now, right?
Yeah, you could do that now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's circuitous, so I think that coming through is probably not going to be real convenient if it's paying.
No, it is, it's.
I tell you, Dunkin' Donuts takes care of the cut through most of the times. That people are using it, that it would be a problem. When is Dunkin' Donuts backed up? It's in the morning. It's not easy to get through there.
So tell me one other thing, the bank there, is it going to be able to exit out onto this new roadway from the back? If somebody comes in off of 44, are they going to be able to get from the front?
Currently, no.
Unless you go through the drive-through?
The bank will function exactly how the bank functions now. It does have a connection into the front of Dunkin' Donuts.
So they'd have to go all the way across to get out?
They would have to go all the way across.
Is there any possibility of giving them access to the roadway so they don't have to exit back out onto 44?
Currently, due to lease agreement purposes, the owner of the property does not have rights to create an access there.
Really?
So is that curved?
It's curved.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, Hiram, it'd be great to, you know, we have an entrance, but it'd be great to get everybody to exit out at the light.
I think that is.
We met with the bank CEO today, he's no interest.
I think the owner is future would love that.
Would love to do that.
You had mentioned something about maybe a yield sign or a stop sign up near, yeah, if you're coming into the West Avon side to make a left into getting a car washed. I think, I think that would be important, some sort of direction. Because I'm concerned about how close that turn is to the turn coming in off of 44.
Well, there's going to be a stop sign here.
Right, so further up.
And so having a yield sign.
Something to that, yeah.
Or how about, can they, is there two lanes there so they can stop before they go into the car wash area? Is that going to jam everything up for the straight left turn?
Carlos Ruiz, project engineer with. This one-way access was proposed to us by STC and recommended that we perform this one-way through the site. So they actually ran through this on themselves, these turning maneuvers and backing up situations for that intersection there. This is why actually you see this kind of dog leg here. That was something that STC had us put in because they wanted us to make sure that we actually force people to understand this is one-way, this is not two-way. There's detailing stations here, again, they have to back up and they're they have this barrier here, so they're going to back up into one-way traffic approaching into the car wash.
So that's a barrier, that dog leg looking.
This is a curve.
It's a little hard for us to say this distance, but.
So again, we're forcing everybody into this site and if you make the wrong turn, there's ways that you can get around that.
Yeah, here's the question, Carlos was saying, this was part of the.
Approval for that, because that's how we're going to get you.
Right.
I actually remember that 44 is up here on the layout.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's tough to see when you're correct.
It's not like you're coming right in here.
Right, yeah, so it's a right turn lane.
A straight and left.
Straight and left, okay.
So you'll have that time.
Yeah, you have that much more space.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking like it was 44 right here, not here, so.
There's quite a gap there. And again, it's a symbolized intersection, so if you guys are worried about queuing up, the intersection is going to stop itself, it's going to relieve congestion, and then you got that new spread of cars coming through.
Well, it's a right turn on red there. I mean, maybe what they, you know, you could just continually flowing in, which, you know, maybe look for some sort of no turn on red type situation there.
See, the other thing is, I think you need to put a, like we're talking, the exit sign to make it pretty apparent that when somebody wants to get out of there, they know to go here and not here.
And you've got people backing back out of here and the cars coming that way. That's going to be a problem.
Or having to wait until this guy's done waxing his car to get out.
There shouldn't be, there really shouldn't be a lot of traffic. This is really.
Yeah.
Well, this is, this is free vacuum service, which I think a lot of people take advantage of.
So when you come out of here, you come out and you do the loop again, is that right?
You must, yes.
You have to loop again, okay.
That's something STC wanted us to make sure we have.
Wait, say that again?
Okay.
When you come out of your car wash, what happens now is you can come back and jump right in here. What's going to happen now is?
You must go left and loop again.
Back out to the signalized, that was probably the main point of the STC application, is people do this.
Oh, yeah, that'd be a horror show.
So that's what happens.
Yeah.
Has happened historically.
And I think to Aaron Hiram's point, that's why it's important, Hiram, to get that stacking straightened out because if everybody's got to go around again.
Right, that's good for the business, force them back into the vacuums.
Go back in your car.
Yeah, you should put a reminder sign there.
But then you're going to have crossing trap, crossing traffic.
And new people coming in.
Yeah.
But I think as was mentioned, the timing, allow us for a little bit of separation. How they go through, you know, it won't be a constant flow out as they go from station to station.
But you can't time the people coming in this way, that's the key. I mean, you're coming out here, you're trying to get the heck out of.
If that stacks up, you can't.
Dry off your car more because the dryers didn't get it.
Yeah, what's, if they're stacking, how are you going to get the cars back out?
I believe, Tunji, am I correct in that there's going to be an employee there at the detailing area which will help with?
Hiram, if they're stacking, they have to go around, how do they get out?
Well, that's, one of the things we were just talking about is that, the thing that we're talking about tonight is the colored portion of this map. And previously when we looked at this, I know that, I mean, I'm just as much to blame as anybody else. But this area here was looked at before and the commission already said, okay. I think what we're seeing here is how this road impacts or doesn't impact how this site actually functions now. So that's the connection, I think. I guess one of the questions I had was, is it, there's not going to be any right turn on red here, I assume?
I don't have any, we can double check on that.
We're actually going.
Exiting out of the parking.
Hiram, we're actually going to ST, once we get approval from this commission, actually, we have to go to OSTA and have our permit, I guess, revalidated through them. So those kind of comments, they're actually going to be addressing them for you.
Okay, so I, I mean, you'd be looking at vertical alignments and so on.
Absolutely, sightlines again, don't have to go over that.
I would just think that coming, it's just my own opinion and I don't belong to OSTA, but coming out of there, I would think it's going to be pretty tricky if you have a right turn on red there, you want to be really careful. I guess the point that the applicant was just making to me that this alignment was previously approved before. I still have the same concern, and I don't think, if it's possible to move this line, I don't think that should be any big deal. And so I would just simply say that if the commission does decide to go ahead and approve this, I don't think it's this road here that's giving us the ajuda. I think it's basically how the site functions in relationship to the road that's proposed here, that's really the issue.
I agree.
And it would just be like maybe a peak, a peak time too. I mean, we're talking about being able to stack currently as it is, 10 to 12 cars, big SUVs too, that are moving through at a, you know, every two minutes. So I.
Hiram, just to your point a second ago, as the site stands right now, people are able to, would be able to exit the car wash and go right up to the light and make a right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, it works without the road. The road adds complexity to the site because now you're crossing traffic. You've got people coming out of the car wash, having to cross traffic with people queuing. Now, there could be a point where you're queued out past the berm there, that little, and you can't even get out because you just washed your car and there's a lot of cars waiting to get into the car wash. That only happens with that new road. As it stands right now, it should work fine because you've got the right turn right in front of you. You don't have to go, you don't have to take the.
Loop again.
Circuits loop.
I agree, Derek. I think, I think what we're really looking at here is a compromise that the DOT has actually sort of suggested that this would be a good thing to do to get along, come out to the signal. And I, but I do agree with what you said. So I think that, and I'm sure that.
So I think we were okay in approving the site as it was. The fact that this road is designed this way, I think is problematic. To the business.
If you can't go wider, you know, you have the banks laying on the right there. What I'm thinking is, if you had three lanes, you couldn't do that. I'm trying to think of how you have a dedicated lane for the people that are in the loop so they're not clogging up the people who want to go through that and go straight or left.
You have a crossing.
You know, I think that.
Am I making sense?
We analyzed this at length with the STC.
Yeah.
There is not enough room on this site to get that many lanes.
When you look at, yeah, when you look at.
When you're looking at this, you're looking at this road servicing the entire center.
Yeah.
The car wash parcel is part of the center that runs from Avon to Simsbury. So the real question that the STC and that has had with respect to that center is there is no exit going west on 44 at a signalized intersection currently. This is the only one that exists. So in terms of everyone that's using that center, not just the car wash parcel, this is the best option to get a left-hand turn on Route 44 coming out of our center. And there really isn't another one.
Can you, like from Dunkin' Donuts?
Exactly, you can't.
Couldn't do that, yeah.
A lot of accidents, the police chiefs all want it, the state traffic commissioner wants it, and we have the opportunity to do it now, and that's why we're here, trying to do it.
So the applicant said they're going to go back to DOT and talk to them about reauthorizing or?
Right, we can't go back to the new OSTA, which was the former STC, until we get a decision on the application from local.
But here's what I was getting to, the, on 44, is there going to be a left turn lane? Is there going to be a dedicated left turn lane on the light?
There is currently.
No, there is not.
There is a left turn lane.
There is.
A designated.
Designated left turn lane, there is no arrow, but there's a designated left turn lane.
So two, two straight and straight and right.
Yeah. There's, once you pull in to Hoffman, there is a dedicated left turn lane in that intersection.
I mean, there's not a dedicated left turn lane in your complex.
There's not an arrow, but there's a left turn lane that takes.
Into your complex?
Yeah, into the, under the car wash.
There's no protected left turn from the signal, but there's a turnoff lane.
Yeah.
I think that helps.
They could add an arrow to the light.
Yeah.
That might control a little of your flow.
I suspect that they won't add the arrow to the light.
Then they lost the arrow to the light.
Might have done it already, yeah.
But that dedicated left turn lane comes back to almost.
Middle of the bank.
Yeah, middle of the bank.
Yeah.
How is it striped? Is it, is it yellow?
No, white, and it's got a.
Dotted line?
Straight, no solid. And it's got an arrow.
I think it's right, when you, if you were to take that left into Dunkin' Donuts, that just past that. That's why it makes it hard when you're coming out, coming eastbound. You're trying to pull in there, going westbound, it's hard. That's tough, that's a tough spot where that left turn starts there.
I would just suggest this, and I think, I think this is a compromise that'll work for everyone, is that if the commission should decide to approve this road this evening, that we, the commission get information with regard to what the stacking is on the site and the engineers should try to maximize the stacking and send that to us as a follow-up to whatever action you decide to take. I think that's a reasonable request, it won't stop anything, doesn't hold anybody up. But I think the commission should feel. anything, doesn't hold anybody up. But I think the commission should feel comfortable that what it's approving is gonna work. It's gonna work for everybody. I'm sure the applicant says, well, there's not gonna be a traffic problem, but frankly, he's probably thinking, I hope there's a traffic problem.
Where's the Avon and Simsbury line?
Behind the Pecko.
Pecko there?
Right between Pecko and Staples.
Here?
And then Simsbury can.
And you talked to the police department in Simsbury? Because Simsbury's gonna have most of the jurisdiction over.
Oh, it's all theirs. That's all theirs.
Last thing I kinda had is, in terms, you're okay with regard to the sewer flows? Talked to the WPCA sewer?
Yeah, I believe we did, and we can definitely confirm that. But again, we're focusing with just this at this point.
And this whole thing catches this way.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, for as far as stormwater, if you want a detailed analysis, Carlos would be willing to bring you through it if you want to know where the water goes, but.
Not too worried about, as long as it's adequate. What about landscaping around the detention areas? You have it green there, but what exactly you plan on putting there?
Let's see if it's.
It's all grass.
Yeah, it's gonna be looking more.
Just for maintenance purposes.
Is it?
Of course, no removal especially. There's, there's just a leak off, it's all curbless there, and there's a gravel strip just into the road.
Yep.
Right.
It's all sheet flow.
It's all sheet, absolutely.
Hyrum?
And we actually have a net zero increase to, Tanji, right there, the pipe that outlets to the catch basin, to the east.
Yeah, that's it.
So the.
It's an overflow that will flow into our existing system if it needs to.
Exactly. There's an existing catch basin here, and DeWitt's, the little wetlands to the south here. So there's zero net increase to Avon. So we wanted to make sure that was the point that we made.
And this is just a raised inlet here, is that how that works?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, there's a filter berm there, again, another added water quality benefit that'll filter through there, and it goes through the raised gray overflow structure, and then that'll discharge into this location. We have another biodepression over in this location. All this is curbless, so that way it can go sheet flow into there, kind of rest, everything settles out, and then it discharges into the other grounds.
So the detention basin, where that goes, is planting grasses?
Correct.
And this, this will have, more on it can be irrigated as well.
So, Hyrum, just go over, what are we asking for, a stacking plan for the parking lot for the car wash?
If the commission decides to approve, I'd suggest that the applicant's engineer provide a stacking plan showing how much stacking can be provided on site. And if the plans don't specify, I would just also say, too, that the detention basins, biodepressions and detention basins, just show some grasses, specific, specify some grasses being planted on that, just so it doesn't turn into a riprap, you know, hole. Just so it should look nice and green.
Okay.
And I think that's probably all that.
I'd also like to see the added signage for the exit to make it clear that people know how to get in and out of their egress to property if they decide, like was brought up, that they don't get trapped in that left-hand turn here. They know that they can get in and out. It's gotta be pretty apparent to people because I can see when it's busy, especially now that we know that the cars have to re-recirculate back around through. We just don't want to see people going around and around and around.
Stuck, stuck in the loop.
I'd like to see the signage up by that berm as well.
Yeah.
That's key right there.
Right, so added signage for on-site circulation.
Right.
The other thing I would just request, too, it does nothing the applicant has to do, but that we be sort of copied when you go through the OSTTA process, just so we have an idea what's, what's.
Tom will definitely keep you in the loop, how that goes. But I think what we can do is just, we'll, we'll add the queuing of the actual car. You'll have little cars on there, and I think we'll, we'll double check the signage. We have maybe just highlight the signs that are proposed.
For signage, I know currently we have one way and do not enter signs there. Are you guys looking for something more specific?
Yeah, I think we're looking for something up here.
And I think here, you'd probably need something showing one way's an exit, one way's to the, I don't know, is this a detail there, or?
Yeah.
Do they have to come back to us for signage?
I mean, we can do it. It's onsite signage, so if you, if the commission trusts me, I'll take a look at that.
As a whole? You're all right, sorry.
Are we satisfied? Any discussion? Comfortable with the plan as it's proposed? Okay, I may make a motion, we approve the applicant's plan of thirteen dash thirty-seven?
I'll second.
With those three items, is?
With the three, oh, excuse me, with this, Hyrum?
Stack, stacking plan from the applicant's engineer, retention basin and bio-retention basin, planting grasses, and added signage for on-site circulation.
Will they have to come back to us with that?
I don't recommend it's necessary. I mean, I, each of the signs will be, I would say, minimum relatively, you know, small.
It's gonna be.
Signs across the street with big yellow arches on this way.
Clearly, it'll be, keep them, will be approved at the last.
Correct.
We'd really only be looking for, I mean, I think here, here.
And I have to submit the site plan to OSTTA anyway, so that revision, again, we're keeping you guys in the loop. You'll see that revision come through the record.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
You gotta get a billboard, 'cause you just passed. Where are you gonna have someone take your speeders down?
He was the owner of the?
No, no, and he's the tenant, the leasee of the car wash.
Yeah.
And then that's the engineering firm that the Plaza hired to put their.
Why didn't, why didn't we have any, well, it's a, because it's a private road.
You said it, though. You tell you have to double loop. That's what causes the real problems. Any stacking, double loop? These guys can't move, no one can move.
I just can't believe that we approved that. It doesn't make any.
Well, because before you didn't have to.
It has solely to do.
Right.
Solely to do with the tenant that is there now.
That's right. That's how we approved.
But when we approved the first, that road, that road wasn't gonna be there, so they weren't gonna, right, they weren't gonna be doing it.
You could exit to the right, you didn't have to loop again.
That's my point.
But that's why we, I mean, I don't feel bad that we approved it, 'cause I think, based on what we approved at that time.
Well, that was my point. I mean, it's nobody's fault. We, as of right, as it was, it was fine.
Yeah.
But now you had this road in, and it becomes an issue. You can't go out to forty-four.
That's why you have to be careful when you approve things, 'cause down the road you don't know what's gonna happen.
Well, no, what you do is.
You get to think about, yeah.
Well, no, well, it was approved. This road no longer works.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, it doesn't.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, item number two, discussion of potential zone text change in Tarrville B1 and B2 zones for regulations RE bakeries. Hyrum?
Yeah, the, you may know that up in Tarrville, I think it's thirty to thirty-two Winthrop Street, there was a convenience store that was approved by the commission a while ago. And for whatever reason, the convenience store didn't go forward.
Right.
Had another person come in now who was interested in creating a bakery, coffee shop in that, in that area. It's sort of a quirk of our regulations that we don't allow bakeries in the B1 zone. We do in the B2 zone, which doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense. And so my suggestion to you is if you agree, is that I would come back to you next month with a proposal to add, simply add bakeries to the B1 zone to allow that to happen. I think it's a type of activity that, number one, wouldn't adversely affect the character of the area in any way, and I think it would also provide some additional economic activity in that area, which it certainly could use.
It's just been vacant, that building. They haven't done.
Is it the old package store? Is that?
Across from the barber shop, right?
Right across from the barber shop, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Now, a while ago, you may recall, we had the, that came in, and when the convenience store discussion was in front of the commission, there was a lot of discussion about parking, and that was always an issue.
Yeah.
I've been working very hard with trying to get the owners to cooperate and perhaps share parking some way and work it out. I'm hopeful that before the application actually comes back to do that there, that they will have some of these issues worked out. The convenience store was approved, so technically I could say, yeah, they have enough parking for the convenience store. But I think coffee shops are kind of, people are in, they're out, you know, it's fairly quick, you know, maybe people there, half an hour, twenty minutes, whatever. But that, and I know that they have to, have to work that out, so I've told them that ahead of time.
They're talking to both owners across the street, Roland's, the barber shop, I want to say that little, I don't wanna call them condos, but there are small apartments that have parking in there that I think is underutilized.
I know that they've talked with the barber shop. I don't know about the second one. So.
Cause it's parking in the back. Remember, we had, there was parking, it's not paved, there's parking in the back and along the side.
Yeah, on the side.
I mean, I think that typically, people that work there would probably park there 'cause it's easier to get to, they know where it is, and it wouldn't be as much of a hassle to get from that area to the store.
The concern is that it's easier to park across the street in the barber shop parking lot, which then robs those patrons of being able to park there.
Yeah. They need to decide to work it out, if there can be a benefit to both of them.
You have a Herman Drive situation. People are gonna just park in front of Roland's barber shop, run and get their coffee, and then take off. So you're gonna have that situation.
So we'll have to, and they're aware of it, as I said, I've told them they need to cooperate. When they come to the commission, they have to have that worked out, so otherwise I don't think it'll work. So if it's okay with you, then I'll bring that to you next month about the adding the bakeries to the text, and then we'll see what happens from there.
Can you, can you talk to why they were excluded in the first place?
No, I can't, Derek.
Use of other tenants or the zone, like other businesses around it, whether it be with chemicals or, you know, industrial use?
I think, you know, it might have had to do with, and today, I really can't imagine it, frankly, a big commercial bakery, I could understand that. Something small where people are baking rolls or baking bread or whatever, I don't think it would adversely affect the area at all.
So it's gonna be like, you know, you walk in and there'll be a case of pastries? It's not gonna be a big?
That's my understanding. It will also be a coffee shop.
Yeah, yeah. Well, more of an industrial bakery as opposed to, you know, mom and pop, you know?
Yeah. Well, they talked a little bit about the fact that, well, it's not gonna be a Starbucks, but it would be something like that, so they would have people.
Coffee shop, so.
So that means people will be sitting there and stopping and having coffee and having something to eat, which means they'll be there for longer.
Could be.
Which makes parking more of an issue, even in the convenience store, 'cause you wouldn't stay in the convenience store for any period of time. You go in and buy something and leave.
That's right.
If you're sitting down and having some coffee and eating something, it's gonna take longer.
And that's why, even if it does get back to you at the next minute, I will talk to the Realtor tomorrow and say, you know, this is an issue that has to be worked out, and if it's not, it's very unlikely that even if we put this change in the regulations, when you bring this particular site plan in, the commission probably would be very hard on it.
Well, what defines it as a bakery versus a coffee shop?
Well, I think the fact that they did do that. They know that they were gonna do baking. They wanted to be straightforward and honest coming in, so they said, look, we don't want to do something that's not permitted and then get in trouble later on. So.
What about right down the road where they've got that, I don't know what it's called, but you can go in, my kids go there and they mold clay, but they're, they've got a kiln on the premises, they're baking clay. I don't understand what the difference.
Yeah.
You're not eating the clay.
No, but other than that, the obvious thing, but I mean, but you, the same type of, things are being used on the premises, right?
Yeah.
You have a lot of foot traffic there, too, I think, is little, I think primarily you'll get a lot of that.
I think that whole area is pretty walkable, there's no question.
Absolutely.
She is on the wrong way of the traffic in the morning, so you don't have to worry about that. There's no parking on that side of the street, so I think it's gonna be the local people, so unless somebody deliberately turns around and comes back to park or parks in Roland's parking lot. Any more discussion on that item? We have one more. Good?
I'll say.
Item three, discussion of the potential change in zoning in the northern industrial area from I-1 to I-2?
This is something, actually, it's interesting. We earlier, talked earlier tonight about the I-1, the Herman Drive area, you know, is zoned I-1. The minimum lot size in that area is ten acres. Clearly, most of the lots in that area don't come close to conforming to that. But one of the thoughts that I had was to, to take a look at that area, maybe perhaps do a little study for you for your next meeting or so, and see whether it would be of any interest to change the zone in those areas to allow, number one, smaller lots that already currently exist there. Secondly, if you notice, too, the airport is actually also zoned I-1, and whether it'd be possible to zone that I-2 as well. Would it make more sense? There are portions of that property, obviously, some people feel strongly that should stay in airport. There are also portions of the property sort of on the backside of that that could be used for other economic development activities that wouldn't adversely affect the airport either. So that would be part of the study that I would propose as well. So if you're willing, I would prepare that either the next meeting or the one after, and have that to you to take a look at, to see whether you decide to, to consider rezoning of those areas. I think that there are a number of places where people would love to have, and you saw, I mean, the number of people that showed up tonight to talk about, there are a lot of different businesses that are up there, no question about it. And if we could encourage those and encourage more to locate in that area with proper parking and so on, I think that'd be a good thing for that area.
I think it's good to have that, and it's our, our job to make sure they design it properly, so it flows better than when those were built.
Okay. I'm happy to do that. Okay.
Status of the village district project?
Sure. The village district study, the Weetok village district study, some of you may have been able to come to a couple of the meetings when we talked about that. Consultant did a pretty, pretty nice job so far, is putting together the draft of that village district, and should be ready for giving us the final draft within a week or so. I just emailed him today and wanted to know when it's gonna show up. It is, this copy of the study and the slides that were shown to the public are all on our website. You wanna take a look at that village, Weetok village district study, you can see where the slides are. Pretty interesting, and some of the development of that whole area from one eighty-five north to Powder Forest Drive is some significant development potential in the future. Obviously, a lot of it has to do with Mitchells, but there are some other properties in there as well that could be sort of repurposed in the near future. That whole area could really be brought to life as a kind of a walkable, sustainable area, too. So, so they just want to let you know that that's very close to being finished up, and hopefully within a week or two, we'll have a final draft for you. What I'll probably do as soon as I get that is meet one more time with the consultant, and then ultimately get a, sort of a refined final draft to you for consideration as to whether it should be adopted as a, as a zoning regulation or not. We'd do a public hearing, obviously, and have everybody participate in that, but that's what we would propose to do there.
Okay, and marketing project?
Marketing project. The consultant submitted his most recent work, which is also, again, on the town website. That was shown to the EDC mostly, and members at the library, I think, last time, I don't remember the exact date now, was it two or three weeks ago. And I also emailed him today and asked him when he's gonna be ready for his final presentation of that marketing study. That was phase one of the marketing study, and I would like him to come to do that to a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, but I wanted to have all the land use commissions know about it and be invited as well. So perhaps if the Board of Selectmen decided that it would be okay to hear that maybe at six o'clock when they had a seven o'clock meeting, to have it presented to everybody, try to get the EDC, the land use commissions, and the Board of Selectmen, perhaps even the Board of Finance to come and spend that, that time, just hearing about where we are and what the next steps are. So that was the idea for that. That'll probably be sometime, sometime in October, if I can convince the Board of Selectmen to hear it then. But it's pretty, it's interesting study. I don't know that, I'd say that anything in it is earthshaking, but it certainly validates a lot of the, the marketing information that EDC has been talking about for some time, gives us some directions to go in, so, I think that would be pretty helpful to us going forward.
And the Hartford Land Use Study, how did that meeting go?
This is, I'll tell you, this was seven days, nine to nine, seven days in a row, it was intense. The, this, the final presentation for the Hartford Land Use Study is also put up on our website, just put up, I think, end of last week, beginning of this week, and was very interesting. We had a number of people come, I would have liked to see more, but it was, we had probably sixty people come for doing the polling on the first, on the Saturday, we had probably forty or forty-five people come to the open house, and we probably had about sixty people come to the, the final presentation as well. The applicant had sort of come up with three different alternatives, and while they sound kind of hokey, you know, when you sort of just talk about, what's an agriculture eco-village, what is that? Well, there's a whole series of things that that could possibly be. A whole health village, which would be, could be anything from early childhood education, could be through assisted living, could be a rehab center, could be a sports rehab clinic, there's a whole series of things in each one of those alternatives that it could possibly be as well. So there's, there's three alternatives that are shown on the website, and just take a look at those if you want. Probably in the next month, they'll be back with a framework for the code, we'll do a form-based code for that property. There was some couple of comments that people made on the patch, that said, well, we shouldn't, you know, we should have to be very careful about what we do to the Hartford's property. I can assure you that we are extremely conscious of that. The Hartford has been very close to this whole process, and, and my understanding is that, and they heard the final presentation on last Tuesday night, they, they were very happy with what they had heard. So I think it's, it's headed in the right direction, it's certainly not there. Ideally, we'd like somebody just to come out of the woodwork and say, here's a check for X, you know, that'd be great, that's realistic, I'm not so sure that that's realistic. So we'll just have to see. But so far, they've been very happy, the potential for the site, for actually both parcels, the one where the existing building is, plus the north forty acres, significant amount of development potential there, and our obvious, we did an interesting in the polling, the keypad polling, I think it was about eighty percent of the people that were there thought the number one problem was, you know, tax base, making sure the tax base doesn't deteriorate, was very interesting, because there was a whole variety of, all the way from high school kids to, to seniors that were there, so it was very interesting for that, and the results of that polling are, I think, are on that site.
So the end, the, the end result is going to be a zoning reg?
Yes.
So any potential new purchaser of that property will have to abide by this new reg?
The trick here is going to be to design the reg so that it's flexible enough to allow for uses that people might come in with. In order to do this, we have to work very closely with not only the Hartford, but their Realtor, so that we know who might be coming in and what they might be looking for. That marketing process is going on right now, they're talking to people all over the country, if not internationally, about who might come in here. So before we actually craft a regulation that's going to say, these are the uses, the reason that we're using a form-based code is because the structure and the sort of the texture of it is what we're trying to set, the uses can be very flexible. So somebody might come in with, maybe they come in with, say, a, a, a high-end specialty grocery store as part of it, maybe some high-end specialty housing, maybe some affordable housing. One of the proposals talked about preserving about half of that northern forty acres as open space and, and making agriculture a possibility on those sites, restricting it to agriculture. One of the things we talked about agriculture is, we talked about the possibility of maybe a seventy-five thousand square foot craft brewery as part of the, the situation, as part of the, sort of the whole ag eco-village thing, and that's, that, there's buildings on that plan that would allow that to happen as well. So whether they could grow some hops there, whether they could grow things there that would, would apply to the craft brewing process, we don't, we don't know.
Would the second, would the secondary priority be to have a reg in place if eventually it becomes property of Sim, town of Simsbury?
We, we want to have a reg in place that would allow the optimum development of it, no matter who owns it. I don't know, I didn't hear anything, Derek, about.
I'm just curious as to why we would be doing this prior to there being a, a potential new property owner, and, you know, I'm, I'm all for having as many tools in the toolbox as possible with regard to somebody coming in with a proposal, but I certainly won't want to hamstring a potential new. We have, we have to make them partners with us, as opposed to saying, here's a regulation.
No, absolutely, we're really aware of that, and that's why the framework, and, and the people that have done this before have probably done more form-based codes around the country than anybody. The reason that we're doing it in, in the way of preparing the framework, and just sort of leaving that in place now, saying, okay, if you can live with the framework, we'll put the details later on, when, when it comes into clearer focus. We're very conscious of that fact, absolutely. So, anyway, exciting process, a little exhausting, but was, I think, hopefully will be well worth it. I have two little quick things that are not on the agenda, Ken, Jerry. One is, you remember, maybe remember a while ago, the commission approved the, sort of the rehabilitation of the McDonald's building, they were going to re-site it, they were going to rehabilitate inside. I worked really hard with the, the engineer and the applicant on signage. What I finally have come up with, and I'll read you the bottom line here, the result of the new signage program would be that the only sign being increased or added to is a fourteen square foot arch sign. Everything else would be reduced or remain the same. The net result is a reduction in the amount of signage area by thirty-five square feet. So I've actually got them to reduce the signage by thirty-five square feet over what is currently there. The decrease in the amount of signage that is also internally lit will be reduced. So those are two things that I've been working really hard with. I'd like the commission's ability to go ahead and work with them to, to get this, go ahead and get this approved, they've been working back and forth three or four times now. To me, that we've got them to reduce the amount of signage that was there, the menu boards that are there are going to stay exactly the same size, they're just going to be moved about, and that, that's basically it, so I'd just like the commission's approval to go ahead and work with them on that.
Well, what's the, what's the current size of the largest sign on, on the site, do you know? I'm just picturing fourteen by fourteen, and that's one big M. Is it going to be lit?
There's an arch, there's an arch, it's called the wordmark sign, it's seventy, that's seventy point six square feet. The menu boards themselves, there's two of those, hundred and sixteen square feet. The real, thank goodness, those are behind the building essentially, and pretty much screened. Those would be relocated slightly with that dual lane that they have, but still, I think, hopefully fairly well.
And where would the fourteen by fourteen M arch sign be?
It's going to be in the area, there's one right on the side of the building now, on the side of Route forty-four.
Yeah.
And so that's going to be removed, and it's going to be reduced from seventy square feet to forty square feet.
Oh, wow.
So, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Plus, I said, any sign that they change or remove, they're going to have to put in externally lit, not internally lit.
It's got to be inches, you're talking, Hiram. I mean, forty square feet.
You said fourteen square feet?
No, forty square feet.
Forty.
Yeah, eighteen feet.
Four by ten?
Yeah, by three.
Very big.
It's a big sign.
For Route forty-four.
I think the scale.
It's sound, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. The rant hop a Hoffman sign.
Yes, with the Hiram, there never have been a problem. You know, you go to their properties, particularly to maintain, they're, they're very responsive, anything that the town wants.
All right, so I'll go ahead and do that, work with them administratively, thank you. Appreciate that, I know they do too. And then the last thing I have, and this really wasn't an official matter for the agenda, but I did talk to the other members that aren't here this evening, this is something that the commission has been talking about for a while, it has to do with renaming of Mallway, it had to do with Jim Gallagher. And I wanted to just run this by you, the town has a proposal for naming a town facility, and this was filled out and given to me by Ed Pabbage last week. The town is proposing, as is the commission recommends to the Board of Selectmen, they're proposing to name that, that facility Jim Gallagher Way. And that's basically it, and the, I think everyone that's not here this evening has said that they would agree with that, although that's not a formal vote, obviously, but I wanted to run that by you folks and see if you had any problem with it, if you don't, and want to go ahead and say, we agree with that, then I can send this to the Board of Selectmen.
And where is it again?
Mallway.
Mallway? They changed the name from Mallway to?
Jim Gallagher Way.
Okay.
In honor of Jim's, you know, many years, was it forty-two, forty?
Oh, okay.
Service on the commission. So if that's acceptable to the commission.
I just, sorry, I have a lot of questions tonight.